Well, thank you. I'm going to call the City Council to order along with our other government bodies that we serve on. And as we customally do, we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance this evening. And normally, I ask the city clerk to introduce those persons, but tonight it'll be the same person. So I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Ru do the invocation, and I apologize for the last minute. And then also, if you also might do in the pledge allegiance today. And so if you're ready.
If you want someone else to do the pledge.
No, you can do the pledge if you're comfortable. If you want, if you want to do the pledge or I can do the pledge?
Either, either way.
You do both. You do both. You're good at it. Okay, so let's all stand up. Thank you.
Please join with me in a prayerful way. Divine and gracious Creator, make review of all that is visible and invisible. Make review of all that is seen and unseen. You are the one we turn to. You are the one who keeps us vouchsafe. You are the one we call on. We ask you to hear our prayers tonight in the many languages we speak, in the many ways we call you, in the many ways we look on you. Hear what we say, hear our people. Tonight, we have many families in this town who have reason to rejoice. Rejoice with them. We also have families tonight who are suffering as this pandemic continues to plague our communities. Be with them. Help us to open our hearts to those who are at need. Help us to always remember the last, the least, the lost, and the lonely among your flock. Help us to make good and wise decisions tonight, not for our own best interest, but for the interest of this community, the place we call home, the place you have chosen us to be, the place you have put us. We ask this in your name and in the name of every resident of this town who can hear us, to please comfort, look over, watch us, and carry us to a better tomorrow. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me as we salute the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
I'd like to state for the record that Councilmember Lopez will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. Councilmember Martinez here. Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ru.
Present.
De Trey.
I think I'm still here. Here.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is presentations, and obviously, this is a means that the City Council can recognize individuals, organizations that have played a role in helping our residents and our, in our community regarding COVID-19. And obviously, one organization that has done well was the Montclair Hospital Medical Center. Tonight's a pleasure again to, we recognize our local hospital here in Montclair, who've gone above and beyond to assist our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. So over the last year and a half, Montclair Hospital Medical Center has seen almost 1,800 patients, either in the emergency department or as an inpatient, and performed almost 5,000 COVID-19 tests. We're also very appreciative for your assistance to your hospital provided our employees in the community at large with the COVID-19 vaccines. It is my understanding that over 4,000 vaccines have been administered over the last year. Thank you for providing this health care to our community during this unprecedented pandemic. I would like to introduce a few special representatives of the hospital that are joining us this evening to come forward and accept this reward. So in the audience, I believe we have Chief Executive Officer Gail Aviato. There she is. And then I believe Dr. Drew Pad. And then finally, Janaya Egert. Very good. So I'm going to ask my council colleagues to join me, and I'll come down there.
Again, the city of Montclair really appreciate what your hospital has done to this community, and obviously, not just Montclair, but all the surrounding communities during this really challenging period. And, you know, we, for one, want to say that, you know, you're part of the first responders community. We have our members of the fire department in the audience, obviously, and obviously members of the police department. And just going through the griefs and the threat of this COVID-19, the sickness of, the possible sickness that could happen to your staff and obviously, patients who are not related to COVID-19. You know, I don't know how you guys did it, and I don't know how your staff did it, and I should say continue to do it, because we're not quite out of this yet. We still have a ways to go. And of course, I'm not wearing a mask, but obviously, I'm vaccinated. But nevertheless, it's really important that as a community, we respect the health community, the experts who understand, the scientists who understand, not necessarily the politicians. And so I want to commend you three, along with your entire staff, that has played a big role in our, in our city, in our region. So I have a certificate to provide. There you are. Thank you. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just short words from Montclair Hospital. Like how you have introduced, my name is Gail Aviato, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Montclair Hospital Medical Center. Thank you, Mayor John De Trey and the City of Montclair for recognizing Montclair Hospital Medical Center being valued partner of the community. It is an honor for us to be here tonight, and thank you. We've talked about the statistics of how much the hospital have dealt with in terms of providing the testing, treating, seeing, taking care of those COVID-positive patients, and sending most of them home, and then providing vaccination to the community. It is our utmost pleasure to serve the community in that way that we were given, given privilege Our leaders and physicians and staff as well, and some of them are here tonight, they have shown a great courage, perseverance, and their commitment and compassion in taking care of our patients and the community, which was badly needed during that time. Their hard work and their timeless, tireless effort in providing compassionate and quality care to our patient and the community during this unprecedented time was so inspiring to myself and even to others, which is very evident in us receiving this humbling recognition from the City of Montclair. On behalf of the staff, the physicians, and every patients that we took care of at Montclair, and the, the community, we were able to provide vaccination to fight against this pandemic. We would like to thank you, and again, it's a privilege and honor to be here tonight. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not sure if any of the councilmembers have any comments you want to make.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Tenese.
I really just wanted to say thank you. Not every community has a hospital that's right around the corner to serve them. So thank you for, on behalf of all of the patients who've been there, and all of the residents who might have to come there in the future. Thank you for all that you do. We know it's a Herculean task, and it's, your staff, I'm sure, have been struggling as staff and all hospitals have. So I just really want you to know how much you're appreciated for the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ru.
Yes, again, thank you for everything you do. The hospital went through some really difficult moments, and yet you've weathered that storm. You've put confidence in this community. Staff members working, I know, sometimes 24, 48 hours just to take care of somebody, giving up their break time, in the hallways, doing what they could. It was, it's unprecedented in this pandemic, but you made it look so good. I know it sapped sometimes your energy and your strength, but know that you cared about humanity. You put human beings ahead of everything else. And for that, this community, and this council, and all those who can hear our voice in this region, we are eternally grateful. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much again, and again, thank you, Montclair Hospital. Thank you for being here. Okay, the next presentation, I believe, Ed, you said you're going to delay this, the next meeting? You just need some more information. The next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, or to want to wish to speak on an item that consent calendar and announce it. So I, first thing we usually do is, if you want to speak here in the council chambers, fill out the blue card, and I don't think we have a blue card. I don't see anybody here. And then those who are on Zoom or on the phone, either they raise their hand on Zoom, they wish to speak on a public comment, or if you're on the phone, you hit star, star six to raise your, star nine to raise your flag. So at this time, I'm going to ask the city clerk, do you have any speakers today?
I do not have any speakers nor advanced requests to speak, and I see no raised hands on Zoom.
All right. Okay, with that, then we will move on, and no public comment. We will now go to public hearings. And we have one item on the agenda. This is the second reading. We will waive the presentation. I will open the public hearing for this item to, to consider adoption of an ordinance number 21-996. This is relating to accessory dwelling units. And I don't see any speakers in this item. No one's raising their hands on Zoom, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'll raise matter back to the city council. Mayor Pro Tem Ru, are you on the queue, or I just forgot to take you off?
You've got to take me off.
But you're going to make a motion right now, right?
I'll make a motion right now for, I will make a motion for, to consider adoption of ordinance number 21-996, amending titles 11 of the Montclair Municipal Code relating to the accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to be read by title and number only.
Okay. And then I hear a second somewhere on my left?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Martinez. There's no further comments. Let's do the electronic vote. Okay, that's adopted 4-0. All right. Next item is consent calendar. Do anybody on my left wish to remove a consent calendar item? No? Anybody on my right? No? Nobody? Okay. And if there's, if there is none, do I hear a motion?
Who moved?
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ru. And again, we'll do electronic vote, which I think we're ready to go. That was fast. I like that. And that's adopted 4-0. So the next item is the council workshop. This is the council workshop in October 18 for 5:45 PM. This is to consider the determination of infrastructure projects to be funded by lease revenue bond issued of 2021A. Any objections to holding this workshop on? No, no objections, then so ordered, then the workshop will occur. And now we are to communications, and I'll start with the police department. So go ahead, Captain.
Good evening, City Council, city staff, and City Manager Star. For those of you that may not know me, I'm Captain Jason Reed. I'm filling in for Chief Abels, who had an event to attend tonight, an important event, a retired, a retirement event for one of our 44-year employees. So I'm here tonight to talk about, it is October, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I want to talk about what you may see at the police department when you see some of our officers or members of our department in town. But before that, I have some, a little something to say that it's just a reminder of the importance of something like this. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual international health campaign organized by major breast cancer charities every October to increase awareness of the disease and to raise funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. Unfortunately, about one in eight women born today in the United States will get breast cancer over the course of their lifetime, and it is the most common cancer diagnosed among women in the United States, and is the second-leading cause of death among women behind lung cancer. There are approximately 3.1 million breast cancer survivors in the United States, and National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer. Now, at the police department, our contribution to this is, you might, as we have done in the past, you may see some officers with a pink rendition of their patches or pink undershirt instead of black or white. And our non-uniformed, well, our, our members that don't wear patches will wear pink authorized uniform shirts. And this is not only something that they do just to do it, they, in order to wear that, they have to contribute a $30, $30 minimum contribution to Loma Linda for, in furtherance of breast cancer. And I've already been on there and seen that some people have already contributed much more than the minimum $30. So in order for a member to do that, they have at least had to contribute that amount towards the cause. And it does work for us, you know, and when we see, I have two, I have a little five-year-old and an eight-year-old girl at home, and when they see girls at home, and when they see a traditional uniform, someone wearing pink, they ask questions, and it's a great chance, even at that age, to start, get the conversation going, whether it's at or NFL football team or what have you. So that's our small contribution that we feel we can do at the PD for that, and that's why we are participating in it. And if anyone has any questions for me, don't be surprised when you see the pink patches for the month of October or the pink undershirts.
Great. I, thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. And if anyone has any information on how they want to contribute, please contact me. I can send the link that we use, that we, the account that we set up at Loma Linda. Thank you.
Okay. The next one is Human Services Department.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I just wanted to make everyone aware that we're happy that San Bernardino County Department of Public Health will be providing free flu shots and the Pfizer COVID-19 booster shot on Tuesday, October 12, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in our Montclair Community Center. You can receive both your flu and the COVID-19 booster shots together. In addition, those who haven't already been vaccinated can also receive that during the same event. You may register for an appointment at myturn.ca.gov, and walk-ins are welcome if appointments are available. The county will be back again on Tuesday, November 9, again, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to give the flu COVID-19 booster and then the second vaccine dose. I also just wanted to remind you that COVID testing and vaccines are still available at Montclair Place from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM every Monday through Saturday, and the COVID testing bus provided by the state and OptumServe is still based at the kids' station parking lot at the trans center. That site is available for testing Wednesday through Sunday from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Walk-ins are welcome.
Thank you. We don't have anything from the city attorney today? Nothing from the city attorney? City manager?
As Captain Reed mentioned, there is a retirement going on this evening, a retirement-related event in the police department. That's Rob Piperzki, police officer, former police officer, most recently, our public safety technician officer. Rob had been in public safety for approximately 41, 41 years, for the first part of that as an EMT working for Cal Fire, and then he transitioned into a reserve officer with the City of Chino. And in 1980, he came to Montclair as a reserve officer, where he served for eight and a half years before he transitioned to a full-time officer in 1989. So after 41 years, Rob has finally decided that it was time for him to take his photography more seriously and focus on that for his remaining golden years. So I believe that's what he's going to be doing. His first trip, I believe, is going to be up the Highway One, so that he can focus on taking photographs of a number of natural characteristics of the California coastline. Interesting point is that during his service as a Montclair police officer, Robert had the pleasure, I guess he would say, of being the field training officer for our current police chief, Robert Abels. And he also trained Brian Lieutenant Ventura. Also, he had an interaction with Lieutenant Ventura when he was a 14-year-old boy in a Montclair park where Lieutenant Ventura was up to no good, and Rob put him on the straight course, and of course, now he's a lieutenant in the Montclair Police Department. So thanks to Rob, we have produced a police department of outstanding individuals. He's trained probably as much as half of the known force, not the current force, but certainly over the course of years as they've come in and transitioned out of the organization. Rob has been instrumental in training. A great number of those police saucers have been part of the Montclair Police Department. So we, we as a city, thank him for his years of service and wish him extraordinary fortune along with his wife, Esther, who is also a former employee of the City of Montclair, and just wish them well. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. And then I will say congratulations to Rob Piperzki, and a little story with him too, with my son. He pulled my son over one day, I think he was 17 or 18, and so he recognized who my son was, and he gave him two options. Either I can give you a ticket, or we can call your mom right now. Well, mom got the call, so. Congratulations again to Rob Piperzki and for what he's done for the City of Montclair. I did attend the Montclair High School football game last week, held here in Montclair, and the Cavaliers won. That was great. It was actually a very good football game to watch, and there was a lot of security as a result of what took place two weeks earlier. And it's nice to say that I think everybody felt comfortable and safe, and it is what it's supposed to be, is supposed to be a fun place, a fun game, and everybody's enjoying themselves. So that was great to see. And then finally, I also want to congratulate staff on the bond rating. The rating came back, as the city council know, and it came up, went up one rating. So obviously, we'll have some financial incentives as a result of that. I will start with Mayor Pro Tem Ru.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, I will start by saying about two weeks ago, Councilmembers Martinez, Johnson, and I attended the League of California Cities Meeting, which was held in Sacramento. There were about 1,800 council members from across the state, a lot of different sessions, a lot of different information. You kind of have to take it or leave it and use it as it's based on your community and the composition of your community. Not every community is the same, and we have very, very different residents. But it was a, I'd been there many times before, and it was a very good opportunity to learn some things, pick up some new information. Some of the vendors are people who have known Montclair and are part of Montclair, so it was good to see them, and I think it was well worth the information we had. On Friday last was the memorial for Councilmember Leonard Politz. Due to a work commitment, I was unable to be there. But Leonard was a very, very dedicated member of this council and this community. He served this community and this council with dignity, with integrity. He loved this community. It was a part of who he was. He will be forever known as somebody who gave as much as he could to this community, not because he had to, but because he wanted to. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry I was unable to make that memorial, but I had a work commitment. San Bernardino County, we heard earlier from Ms. Richter, we have some COVID shots available. Please, if you're in an earshot of this microphone, or you have friends and neighbors, please receive your inoculation if you can. We have in San Bernardino County about the lowest inoculation rate in Southern California, and that's not good. We'll transmit this to each other if we don't start increasing our inoculation rate. This is a virus that is getting stronger and stronger. So if you haven't been inoculated, please try to do so. Gold line, there is progress being made on the gold line. We continue to push forward with it. I know the legislature is looking next year at the potential for some funding. Didn't happen this year because it was tied to the bullet train, but I've spoken to, and I won't go into all of it tonight, several members of the Assembly and the Senate, and they're fully behind efforts to get this to Montclair. I too want to congratulate Officer Rob Piperzki on 44 years of dedicated service. His retirement is tonight. I think each one of us on this dais would have loved to be there, might have preferred to be there, but as elected representatives of this community, we're here tonight doing that job, and I know Rob would expect that of us. He would want us to be here doing the people's business. I know each one of us will have an opportunity to congratulate Rob later. And then finally, we honored the hospital tonight for their tremendous work, everybody from the orderlies on up to the doctors and the fantastic work they do. And I want to thank all of our employees here in the city, wherever you are in the department, wherever you are in the city. Thank you. In this pandemic, which is still ongoing, you've really done a yeoman's job in trying to make sure we keep this community safe. And that's it. I know we're on limited time. Thank you.
And I apologize, I just wanted to, on the vaccine for the county, I think the county is a little less than 65% partial vaccination, and I believe a little below 60% on fully vaccination. I can say Montclair is over 70%. We're about 71% partial and about 63%, 62, 63, fully vaccinated. Go ahead, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items, but I'll talk quick. The first thing that I want to bring up, I remember that last year during the summertime, when we had triple-digit heats, and we couldn't get the splash pad up because we didn't start early enough to get the equipment and whatever testing or whatever needed to be done. So I'm just waving the splash pad flag, so hopefully, that we'll be up and running by next summer. And then I wanted to speak about the California Cities Conference, which was, I thought, was amazing. The best part was my, the ability that I had to talk about the great things that are happening here in Montclair. There were, at one point, I was talking to some people from Northern California, I believe they were from Tracy, and they were talking about homelessness and tent cities. And I said, oh, we don't have tent cities, because we have a team of people who handle that for us. And they were, their mouths were agape. They were so impressed by what our code enforcement officers in our local community people have been able to, our folks from Christian Development have been able to do in partnership with Montclair, excuse me, Metro Honda, and to really help their, our homeless people, so we don't have tent cities. And so I was pretty proud of our city in that regard. And then there was another thing, one of the workshops was about improving public safety. And they said the way, the speakers described the way you do that is when your fire department and your police department collaborate with the community, and just being in the community and doing things like neighborhood watch. And I felt pretty proud to know that our police officers and our firefighters are always in our community. Any community event, they're out there interacting with the children and making sure that everybody's safe and letting people know that police and fire people are pretty cool folks. So I felt pretty proud of our little city in that regard. And then I wanted, one of the people I'd like for, if you have a moment, I would like for people to look this gentleman up. His name is Richard Montanez. He was the keynote speaker at the conference, and he is the inventor of Hot Cheetos, and he did it as a janitor. So he was so delighted that he got a job at Frito-Lay, and the, and the, that plant was about to close, and the owner said, you guys figure out something to make it work. And so he took a bag of cheese puffs from the plant, and he took it home to his wife and said, put some of your spicy sauce stuff on here. And so she did that, and they got some little bags, and they closed them with an iron, and they hand-grafted all the, you know, the front. And then he took them to give to the people at work, and then somebody said, well, what do you think your profit margin would be? And he said, I was just a janitor. What did I know? So I said, it'll be this much. And so they kind of laughed at him, but now Hot Cheetos are a billion-dollar commodity, and it started as a janitor. First, so, and I say, that's important to me, because some of people think, oh, they say, I'm just a, well, I'm only a, and they think they're not say, I'm just a, well, I'm only a, and they think they're not important, but every single person's important. So again, his name is Richard Montanez. If you want to know his story, it was pretty fascinating to me. And then the other thing that stood out to me was a workshop on attracting the next generation workforce. And they talked about things about, like, youth in government. And I think I seem to recall when I was a CAC member some many years ago, we had a Montclair high student from the government class who sat up here on the dais. But we, you know, we don't have time to go through all of it here, but we certainly need to talk about offline, we need to talk about mentoring programs and how we can help our young people know what's available to them. They all know they're supposed to go to college, but maybe some people don't want to go to college. Maybe they want to work with their hand. Can they mentor with our public works people to learn how to do heavy equipment, et cetera? Because everybody doesn't have an advanced degree, like Mr. Montanez. He was a janitor. Anyways, I'm gonna, I could talk for another hour on that, but I won't. I only have a couple other things. There is a Live Your Dream Award. It's managed by the Seroptimists, and it assists single mothers with up to $16,000 to help with tuition and books and transportation and childcare. So if anybody's interested in the Live Your Dream Award, you can apply between August 1st, which has long passed, through November 15th, and just Google Live Your Dream, and you can apply. And I think the last I heard, there was only one person in the Montclair area who had applied. So for those single moms who need help, please apply for the Live Your Dream Award. Then also, from now through October 31st, from 4:00 to 9:00, Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday from noon to 10:00, the pumpkin patch is open, and it's a little different than it has been in prior years because there's a taco stand out there. So you can go and play in the, the children can play in the rides and, you know, buy, look for the pumpkins, and the parents can eat. So that's a wonderful thing. And lastly, every Thursday between now and December 16th, there are interactive activities for children at Montclair Place. It's right outside of Barnes &amp; Noble, and it's every Thursday at 4:00 PM. So take the little ones. The next thing coming up, which is this coming Thursday, is an interactive music show. So the little people get to actually do the instruments. So I think I've talked enough. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So part of the California League of Cities Conference was recognizing the cities across California for their programs and their contributions to their community that really benefited their residents. And so I must have gone to some of the same conferences as Councilmember Johnson because I brought home some of those same ideas and thoughts. But I am very excited to explore maybe incorporating into our city some of those ideas, especially as it pertains to youth involvement and programs that affect the youth in our community. And I would also like to congratulate Rob Piperzki on his retirement. That's fantastic for him. That's all.
Thank you very much. And I think at this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn the council meeting. No closed sessions.